Good evening. We would like to welcome everyone to the March 5, 2024, meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We'll call the meeting to order, and we do have a quorum tonight. We did not have any public comments, but I did want to take just a quick minute to recognize, I believe we have quite a few students here tonight from one of the MTSU City and Regional Planning classes. I think they'll learn a lot here tonight. They do take roll at the end of the meeting, so no sneaking out early or anything like that. Not really. Hopefully, it won't be terribly long, but we'll see. And I understand you all made it even without your professor making it tonight, so good for you. We're happy to have you. Thank you. Our first item of business is to approve minutes of the February 19, 2025 Planning Commission meeting. We've had a chance to review those ahead of time.
Move for approval.
Second.
Move for approval, and second, Ms. Jacob?
Ms. Ava Water?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Okay, minutes approved. Next, we have our public hearings and recommendations to council. Our first item there tonight is a zoning application for approximately 0.24 acres, located along East Street and West Street, to be rezoned from RM16 to RS4. Elijah Montgomery and Nancy Morris are the applicants. Mr. Barbie, good evening.
Good afternoon, Chair Jones and members of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. This first application for you this afternoon or this evening is a request from Mr. Elijah Montgomery, excuse me, and Ms. Nancy Morris. They're requesting to rezone two parcels along East Street and West Street from RM16 to RS4. The reason they're wanting to rezone these properties is the, at one point in the past, the property that faces East Street was developed with a single-family dwelling on it, and that dwelling was constructed across the common property line, as you kind of see here on your screen in front of you. They're wanting to be able to shift this property line to the west to eliminate that conflict and end up with a resulting lot that is buildable. Mr. Montgomery proposes to construct a single-family dwelling on that lot at some point in the future. The adjacent land use in this area is, or the adjacent zoning in this area is RM16, and all of those properties are currently developed as either single-family detached dwellings with some apartments. The majority of what you see in this area is single-family detached dwellings. Our 2035 Future Land Use Map identifies this area as auto-urban residential character. This proposal tonight is consistent with that character. Staff is supportive of this application for the following three reasons: the required zone, or the requested zoning is consistent with the Future Land Use Map of the Murfreesboro 2035 Comprehensive Plan; that the plan to develop the vacant lot as a single-family detached home is consistent with the surrounding neighborhood; and the rezoning will allow the resubdivision of these two lots in order to eliminate the existing encroachment over the lot line. The Planning Commission will need to conduct a public hearing tonight, and at the end of this public hearing, they will need to hold any discussion and then formulate a recommendation for the Murfreesboro City Council. I'm available if you have any questions.
Okay. Do we have any questions tonight before we open this public hearing? Then we will have our first public hearing. We'll invite anybody that would like to come to the podium to speak about this item to come forward. You'll state your name and your address, and you will have three minutes to make your comments to the Planning Commission. And please do make all your comments directly to the Planning Commission and not to other members of the audience or the developers. So with that, we will open the public hearing and ask for anybody to come forward that would like to speak on this item. See anybody? So we will close the public hearing. Ask for any further comments or questions regarding this item and/or a motion.
Move for approval, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and a second, Ms. Jacob?
Ms. Ava Water?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye. Okay, motion passes, and we will move on to Item B. This is a zoning application to amend the existing PCD zoning. Cannonsburg Place PCD on approximately 23.4 acres, located along Joby Jackson Parkway and Shelbyville Pike. Walmart, excuse me, Walmart Real Estate Business Trust is the applicant. Mr. Donovan, good evening.
Good evening, Chair Jones, and thank you. So the item before you tonight is a request to rezone the subject property on the south side of Joby Jackson Parkway and the east side of Shelbyville Pike. The approximately 25-acre side is currently developed as a Walmart super center, and the original PCD for this site was approved in November of 2012, with three subsequent site plans being approved after that, one of those which established the original store. Adjacent land uses around the property include a mixture of both residential and commercial. Just to the north of this property is Savannah Ridge PUD, which has a variety of commercial uses, including Aldi in it. To the east is an existing townhome development, as well as multifamily, and some multifamily is to the south, as well as an existing gas station on Shelbyville Pike, and some land to be developed across Shelbyville Pike that is zoned commercial. The Future Land Use Plan for this area identifies it as general commercial, which is consistent with a big-box retailer such as Walmart and automotive services-related enterprises, which we'll get into when we discuss the amendment a little further. The bulk of this PCD is staying consistent with the existing PCD that is in place today. There are two elements that are changing. One of those is the fuel center that they are adding as a permitted use with a C-store that's approximately 1,600 feet, square feet, and has non-fuel pumps associated with it. The original PCD envisioned this area to be a little smaller with a walk-up-style kiosk. Staff has been working on several items that the Planning Commission mentioned at the earlier meeting that were of concern. We have worked through several of those. The applicant has added the requirement that a Type-C buffer will be provided along this eastern side of the property here, so that that provides some more buffer to the townhome development just to the east. They have also provided us a little more detail on their lighting and added the language that they're going to have a half-a-foot candle at the property line that would be along that eastern margin as well. And the initial photometric plan that they have provided us, that they've ran, actually show values that are less than that, closer to 3/10 with that Type-C buffer in there. So they have added the language to, you know, compel them to be at a half-a-foot candle or less, and have already done some initial demonstration that they will be able to meet that. The Planning Commission also had questions about their hours, which they included those for us as well in the PCD, and the hours that they have in the PCD save from 5:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. of operation. So they have worked with us to address those items that were brought up earlier. The other item in the PCD that is changing is related to the parking ratio, where they are going from the 4.7 units per 1,000 square feet, which is what's in the existing PCD today, to a proposed of 2.5 per 1,000 square feet, which is consistent with what we would request of a big box building under straight zoning today. So they're just bringing it into consistent, what's consistent with our current zoning regulations to allow them some flexibility in the future if need be, because there are other proposed uses in the PCD that could be added to the site. So staff is supportive of the rezoning request for the following reasons: the PCD is consistent with the Future Land Use Map of the Comprehensive Plan, which supports automobile services-related enterprise and big-box commercial stores; the parking ratio is consistent with the zoning ordinance, which would support the proposed and existing uses on-site; the design elements of the proposed fuel center and convenience store mirror those of the existing approved development. This consistency helps maintain a cohesive visual identity and minimizes any disruptive changes to the established character of the area. And the proposed Type-C buffer, along with existing vegetation, will help minimize any potential impact to the adjacent residential properties. The Planning Commission will need to conduct a public hearing on this matter and formulate a recommendation to City Council. I'm happy to answer any questions, and there's a representative here to represent Walmart as well. He can take any questions that the Planning Commission may have as well.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Donovan. Did anybody have any questions? Happy to see a lot of the changes that we were requesting during the workshop have been addressed, but any other questions before we open the public hearing? Okay, all right, thank you. We will open the public hearing on this item and ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak. Okay. Then we will close the public hearing on this item and ask for any other comments or questions, concerns on this item and/or a motion.
I'll move for approval, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, Ms. Jacob?
Ms. Ava Water?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye. Okay, passes. And our next item, Item C, is a zoning application for approximately 0.82 acres, located along Greenland Drive, to be rezoned from RS10 to PUD, be the Greenland Heights PUD, and Regis Agarwal, and I'm sorry, I do that every time, is the applicant.
Is Ms. Smith here? You going to take it, Mr. Blommer?
I'm going to present for Ms. Smith. I think she's enjoying an anniversary dinner with her husband tonight, so we hope she's having a nice, a nice time.
Happy anniversary.
So this is the same property that you reviewed at our daytime meeting. It's two parcels located across from campus on the north side of Greenland Drive. There are two existing single-family residences on those properties, as well as a pedestrian and bike connection from the apartment complex to the north down to campus. So the surrounding area includes a number of apartment complexes. You'll see apartment complexes to the north, northwest, and northeast, as well as a number of homes that are primarily rental homes along the north side of Greenland Drive, across from, from campus. We've seen a little bit of redevelopment along this corridor across from campus. So for example, at, on the very left-hand side of your screen, you see the College Point Development, which is, the bulk of it was an apartment complex, but there is a, a commercial building there on the corner. And then across Old Last Cassis is a liquor store that was, it was an old quick sack that was redeveloped with a more kind of urban, walkable design. So our Future Land Use Map in the Murfreesboro 2035 Comprehensive Plan calls for this area to be, to develop with a mixed-use land use character, and the proposed development is consistent with this mixed-use land use character, as it consists of both residential and commercial uses. On this 0.82 acres, of course, the two existing single-family homes would be demolished, and there would be one building consisting of four residential units and 2,700 square feet of commercial space, which they have indicated that the initial tenant will likely be a UPS store. But in talking with SEC, that is, that I don't think is 100% who it may be. It may be one of the other permitted uses, but I think their, their intent is for a UPS store to go in that 2,700-square-foot commercial space. There was quite a bit of discussion at our day meeting regarding parking and maneuvering, and representatives from SEC will be able to address in a moment how they reviewed the parking and to see if anything could be done to provide additional parking, an additional maneuvering area. But one of the things they actually did was, at the northeast corner of the site, you'll see there, there's an area that is, that it has striped lines on it that was a parking space. They took that out to make it a turnaround area for, for the vehicles that are, that are parking there or that are attempting to park, just in case they are unable to locate a parking space. They, they looked at the possibility of replacing the dumpster enclosure with a enclosure for carts, which would take up a smaller footprint, but considering that their proposed tenant and possible future tenants might need a dumpster, they decided to keep the dumpster in. And what I'm showing you right now is actually an outdated site plan. They have actually added the dumpster back in, and I provided you the most up-to-date pattern book at your table. And so if you turn to page eight in the pattern book, you'll see the, the most up-to-date concept plan. One of the things that I did want to clarify is that the four units are for rent. They are preserving the possibility of converting those to for-sale units in the future with a horizontal property regime, but initially, they will be all owned by the same owner and will be for-rent units. The architecture of the buildings, Mr. Grover with SEC, will go over in just a moment. One of the concerns at our day meeting was with regards to uses on the permitted use list that would, that would really be impractical, because they would require more parking than the, than the center has the ability to park. And so Mr. Grover and Mr. Mulchan went through that list and have eliminated all of the uses that, that would not be able to park. And so that, I think, there was concern that having uses on the list that wouldn't be able to park sets up a false expectation that, that those uses would, would be able to go there. And so they, they've tried to whittle down that list to what could actually work there from a parking standpoint. Staff is supportive of this revised rezoning request for the following reasons: the commercial and residential uses in the proposed PUD are consistent with the mixed-use center Future Land Use designation of the general plan. The character of this land use includes designs for pedestrian connectivity to surrounding neighborhoods, architectural enclosures with enhanced streetscape design, multi-story structures, and shared parking with complementary uses as the general plan land use policy states. Number three, the pedestrian and bicycle path connections are being relocated within the site between the apartments and this project to continue easy access to the MTSU campus. Number four, any of the updated allowable uses, should they change over time, will meet the city standards for parking. Number five, architectural design is compatible with the surrounding land uses. Removal of existing dilapidated homes is a benefit to the neighborhood. And number seven, this project, staff hopes anyway, will be a catalyst for positive change and redevelopment of this area along Greenland Drive. Right now, I'd like to invite Mr. Brian Grover with SEC to make a presentation on the specifics of the development, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Chair Jones, members of the Planning Commission? Good evening. I am Brian Grover from SEC. With me tonight is Rob Mulchan, also from SEC. On behalf of our client, Mr. Agarwal, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity and your consideration for our proposed rezoning. The site is located at 1603 and 1607 Greenland Drive. This is just north of MTSU campus at the terminus of Champion Way. To the north and northeast are existing apartment complexes. I believe that is College Point Apartments in the cove at College Point. To the east and west are existing single-family detached dwellings, which are primarily tenant occupied at this time, with MTSU owning everything just to the south of Greenland Drive. This request is to revise these, the site zoning from RS10 to a planned unit development. The apartments to the north and northeast are currently zoned RM16, with the existing residential to the east and west being RS10 and MTSU campus being institutional. The Future Land Use Map currently proposes this area, this specific site, as well as the surrounding area, to be a mixed-use center. This Future Land Use proposes several key aspects of design, such as parking being oriented towards the rear side of the site, large walkable sidewalks within the development, as well as multi-use and multi-story buildings. As the site is today, this is the proposed west side of the site. This is at 1603 Greenland with 1607. On the east side, this is a view of that existing pedestrian and bike path that is preserved within this development, and a couple images of the surrounding apartment complexes for the area. These are views looking up and down Greenland Drive. This is looking east, west, and the view into MTSU campus via Champion Way. The site has not changed drastically from our last meeting. A majority of the key components for programming have remained the same, such as the four residential units, the commercial. We have added a maximum square footage to this to make sure, because there was some concerns with, working with staff, particularly Holly, about additional areas being dedicated to commercial, so we make sure that we did limit that to that 2,700 square feet. There's still robust amenity package being proposed with this development. The private, the private tenant fitness center, as well as the tenants having access to their own private balconies on the second story, a large plaza space out front with seating areas and formalized plantings. Parking is oriented towards the rear, as per the mixed-use center from the Future Land Use Plan. One of the aspects that, as Matthew mentioned before, we were looking at doing, the possibility of trash bins for this. As we began to look into that further and further, the feasibility of that diminished. So working with staff, we decided to put the dumpster back into the site. An aspect of the previous design we wanted to maintain, though, was that turnaround spot further into the site. You'll see a turn template on here. That's actually for a passenger vehicle. That's a Ford F-150. So if a vehicle was to get into this site, they could easily turn around even before going into the parking area. And if they do go into that area and cannot find a spot, there is a reserved area for them to turn around in with that spot. That does take away one of the extra parking spots we have. We had four, that would take it down to three. As part of the parking, including that turnaround, there were some concerns about how this would be managed, so we have updated the plan book to state that these parking areas would be managed via markings on the ground or with signage. One of the key aspects that we discussed last time as well was the allowable uses. We have updated the allowable uses, as Matthew said, to reduce that amount, to focus primarily on what uses would be feasible with the current design. We also added, for your convenience, additional column to show the required parking per use within the plan book. The architecture has remained exactly the same for our previous meeting. The residential units are still approximately 1,850 square feet of living space. It'd be two-story, with the, with the residentials being on the rear of the first story and the second story, as seen here. And the first story's still offering that amenity space. The balconies on the second story, just pointing those out, this would also be part of that private open space for those units, as seen within that perspective. The building, as seen from Greenland Drive, is located at the top of this slide here, with the rear on the, on the lower portion, and then the building's façades as seen from the east and west portions of the site. The entrance into the site, as well as the preservation of the pedestrian and bike pathway, played a heavy role into the design of this site. Working with public infrastructure, the proposed entrance into the site was four lanes. That ate up about 30%, 35% of the frontage of the site. But working with staff and making sure that the through lanes still aligned with each other across the way, we were able to come up with this design. Some aspects that would also change with this would be the realignment of the crosswalk at this intersection to make sure that pedestrians' safety is still preserved. The amenity package, as stated before, remained the same, with the residential fitness center on the first floor, and still providing that plaza space out front with seating, bike racks, so on and so forth. Finalized formal open space design would be finalized with staff at site plan level. Landscape standards for the site, we are proposing, along the pedestrian pathway that's being preserved at the site, a landscape overlay. Working with MTSU, there are some concerns with student safety, especially at night. So some of those standards that are being implemented within this area include seven-foot minimum clear trunks on trees, as well as a maximum 24-inch height on shrubs to preserve visibility from the right-of-way for those using this pedestrian pathway. Parking lot screening will be provided where possible. The eighth-to-10-foot pedestrian pathway located on the north side of the site does limit the room for planting, but if it is available, we will be able to, and will propose plantings within that area. Foundation plantings will be provided along all sides of the site, except in that little egress area into the building in the southwest corner. Perimeter plantings would be provided along all three sides of the boundary of the site. When it comes to exceptions for the site, there's two primary categories of our exceptions we are requesting, the first being setbacks, with the first of those being a reduction in the side setback from 10 feet to 5 feet. As the site sits today comparative to the neighbor to the east, there's already about 25 feet between those two buildings, so this would still have 30 feet of distance between those buildings. Even though they have that distance now, the eastern wall would still be proposed to have a rated wall for building in codes for fire safety. And the other setback request being the dumpster being located in the setback at the rear of the property. This can be done, however, if a dumpster is over a certain square footage, typically most of them are over 200 square feet, that requires an exception to be put into the rear setback or side setback at that time. The other types of requests for this are primarily landscaping exceptions, the first being that removal- The first being that removal or reduction of screening landscape for the parking along the pedestrian pathway, and the second being the replacement of the typical 15-foot wide type-D buffer for the five-foot perimeter plantings. This request, working with staff, comes from the possibility and the desire for the rest of this area to develop into a mixed-use center along with this site. If you guys have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer those now or after the public hearing.
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So it looks like the residential, the four bedrooms, I mean, the four apartments with two bedrooms, setting aside 8.8 spaces, basically nine spaces.
Correct.
And the commercial side has additional nine spaces.
So, the residential would be required 8.8 spaces, which would round up to nine. The required parking, you can see on that list, those are the minimum number of parking for that use to function. The provided parking we have for the commercial, as it stands now, is 12 spaces. So any use that was over 12 spaces was removed.
Okay, so I still think this project is under park, combined residential and commercial. And I think this UPS will be a high traffic. And I know last time we spoke about the setbacks, if we could do anything with that. Apparently, we can't do anything with it.
No, we looked into that, and the design is limited by the requirements from public infrastructure for that drive. That was coming from discussions with ROM about exactly how they want that drive to interact with that intersection. It does create quite a bit of a pinch point, going from four lanes, essentially, a little over four lanes, down to a two-lane drive. But this is because of the access given for the existing Champion Way across the road. The, now I'll bring it back up here. So, and the main aspect that influenced that design is the engineering standards for lanes. So when it comes to through lanes in Murphysboro, they cannot be more than a half lane off from the opposite lane coming into the intersection. So, and that's what that blue line is showing. It's going from the center of that through lane towards the other side. So we're just limited to how far we can even place those lanes on the site. And that's not like a design choice that we necessarily would, is desired, it's just what's required, if that makes sense.
It wouldn't be the size of the building.
The size of the building? So, like the first floor?
I'm just saying, you're saying the lanes are, is part of the reason why. And I'm just saying, I'm just looking at the large building on this somewhat small lot, but I would just want to go back to the parking. And in the parking, you've got residential. Where's the guest parking?
So...
Are they parking, and commercial parking?
The, we don't have any dedicated guest spaces. We do have extra spaces, I guess you could say. And with the idea of the parking being managed by the store owner, or the building owner, we could provide possibly one or two dedicated guest spaces in the site, but that would just remove any additional spaces for the commercial.
That's all I have. The uses, they, under the prohibited uses, it says tobacco sales is primary use, vape sales is primary use. So, what, I guess what we're saying there is, if it was a convenience store, a grocery store, or however a retail shop is defined, that they could have tobacco sales and they could have vape sales. Is that what we're saying? I mean, I don't know how you, how you eliminate some of this, but the vape sales place that's on Greenland, that is across from the Greenland Drive parking lot, is an absolute eyesore. In reference to the signage that they have in the building and the whole bit. And that's the last thing that I want to see in, as part of this project.
I believe we, if staff would be fine, we can actually just remove that use altogether, regardless of if it's primary or not. I think we'd be fine making that commitment.
Just, I'm just thinking that through of if, you know, like there was a small retail grocery store in there that had like a very tiny portion of its inventory devoted to selling cigarettes, like that, just thinking how that might be a little bit difficult to enforce and police. Whereas we know that if it's a, if it's a primary use, we can say, they come to us, no, that use is not permitted.
Well, and also, Mr. Tully?
Also, Mr. Halliburton, if your concern is the signage, if you do have a small convenience store, but it's plastered with signs for vape and cigarette sales, then I think there'd be a reasonable argument that that would have converted it to being the primary use. So, that the primary use would be cigarette, tobacco, if that's all that they're...
Right.
That they're advertising, and then the accessory would be everything else they have on the shelves. So, if the concern is signage, you know, if they have more than, you know, if the majority of the signage is tobacco and vape sales, then the argument would be that would have become the primary use, which would be prohibited.
Okay.
Could we do the same signage restriction we put on the gas station or medical center?
The one that's right, just to the east of the interchange?
Gateway Liquors over there.
Okay.
Yeah, that would take care of the signage issue.
Mr. Grover, I think, I think that's, that's a development that SEC worked on, so y'all should have access to those restrictions. There was, I think, I think it was a set of restrictive covenants that were recorded with those.
Gateway Investments owns it.
Okay, we can add that.
I've just got a quick question, just to, for Reggie. Is there enough room on the west side to maybe do smaller trees and put two, three parallel spots right there, just to add a couple extra parking spots?
We can definitely look into that. That is, I thought actually, I had just sitting down before the meeting today. We just got to make sure that we're not going to be jeopardizing the flow of traffic coming in and out of that, but that's something we can definitely look into.
Because I think even on the main picture, the front of our handout here tonight, you know, it kind of looks to me like maybe there's a car parked, you know, right next to the sidewalk, which is to be in the inbound traffic lane. It probably is pulled up there to run in and drop off the pack.
Yeah, always to the left there. We can get that revised. I think he's got the car facing the wrong way in the running room.
Because I think that's what...
This was, this was from a similar development in the UK, I think.
Yeah, driver's lane.
Well, it's only one way in. It's only one way in, three ways out, so we got a problem. We got a traffic jam.
Yeah.
You know, also, I noticed that only two of the allowable uses have more than nine spaces. So, another thing to consider is maybe just knock those two off the list, and then that gives you extra three. Like the way you think.
So that would be the grocery store and the catering establishment?
Yep, we can, we've been more than happy to take a look into that. I think with, if we were able to add those parallel spaces, I think that would have the same remedy as well.
We'll have the public hearing here in just a second, you know, get all our comments in. But I, you know, I think it's a project, you know, we like to see the revitalization, so to speak, over here across from the MTSU and a lot of these older houses that we think are going to get redeveloped along the way. You know, I think it's a nice-looking project. I just, you know, think we're pretty concerned about how tight we're trying to squeeze everything in here. And the fact that we're looking at it with the UPS sign up there and just want all of us to remember that, you know, the day it opens, there might never be a UPS store in here. It could be something totally different. Because we're just approving potentially everything else that's on this list. And it might be four different uses up and down through there, so then they have to pick and choose, I guess. You know, so may or may not be a UPS store. I do feel like the UPS store is one of the more, would cause a lot of traffic in and out. So I think that's a, you know, really a good way for us to look at it, but definitely may not be the one that's there in the long run, just because the sign is on our plan book right now. So, like the project overall, just feeling a little squeezed in on the site. So, other comments before we open the public hearing?
Is there signalization on the south side that's being added, like when you're leaving, if you wanted to go into Greenland, or no? Another's not now, but is that proposed?
It would be proposed, yes.
It would be, it would be a four-leg...
Right.
Traffic signal.
Mm-hmm.
It's a three-leg now, correct?
Yes.
Is there anything on the south? Yeah, correct. Yeah, 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 you're right.
Yeah, there's both directions on Greenland and headed north on Champion, signalized, and this would add the southbound traffic signalized as well.
So I'm just going to say, yeah. I still think there's the potential to ask for squeezing the size of the building in a little bit, but... Nothing else? We'll open the public hearing? I wouldn't know if I didn't leave myself open.
Good for you.
And I don't see that we've checked off that we have opened the public hearing. So, we will open the public hearing and ask if we have anybody here tonight that would like to come up and speak regarding this item. Welcome. Come on up, state your name and address. Right here in y'all's neighborhood, tell us what you think.
So, I say my name and address?
Yes, sir.
How do I address all of you? I would like to say that. Do you have a preference? Okay, hello. I'm Daylon Franks. I live at 926 Leaf Avenue. So this is actually very local to me. This intersection is somewhere that I frequent as an MTSU student, right? This is within my community. I just wanted to comment on a couple things. Notably, I feel that you guys have more of a basis for the actual rules that go into all of this, but my feelings on the development, I personally like the mixed use, along with some of the other developments we've seen along Greenland, and the fact that housing is an issue for students always, especially right by the university. I want to comment on the fact that you, I forget who, but some of you brought up that the potential for the building's commercial section may change. We're not guaranteed to what that is, whether that's signage, as with other parts of Greenland, or if that's something that, say, becomes far more busy, right? My main concern that I wanted to bring up here is that I know Reeves Rogers is right there, and at certain peak hours, that stretch of road is inaccessible. And I know there's not that much you can do with the infrastructure provided, but my only concern is, in the case of a commercial use that is high traffic, how does that impact that intersection specifically, because it is a major reason as to why, like, I bike to school some days, as opposed to driving to a certain parking spot? Thank you. I'll yield my time to y'all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right.
I hope he gets extra credit for that.
Anybody else want to come up and speak on this item? Okay. We will close the public hearing. Would you like to address how traffic is handled when, like during the peak school zone time?
Yeah, and one of the things that Mr. Balachandra has emphasized in adding this fourth leg to this intersection is that it's going to have to be managed very carefully because of, you know, every additional second that traffic on Greenland is stopped, it backs it up further. And so, we even talked about, for this particular parcel, having connectivity in that rear drive to the parcels on each side of it, so that more development could have access to a signalized intersection. And at the present time, Mr. Balachandra was opposed to that, because every additional car that's added to that, to that fourth leg will, you know, contribute to stoppages on Greenland. So, we have the language in there that, that preserves the ability to have those connections in the future to the adjacent properties, but as of right now, what is going to be going to that, to the, the fourth leg of the intersection is just what is on this site, unless at some point in the future, the city determines that it's, that it's necessary to connect to redevelopment, redevelopment on either side of it. But I know public infrastructure has been, has been very adamant that this was something that needed to be done right and really managed carefully, just because of the delicate balance there on Greenland.
Thank you, Mr. Blomley.
I have a really dumb question.
Go for it. It's not dumb, it's a good question.
Is there a restriction of vape product sales within so many foot of a school, like alcohol?
Perhaps in chapter four of municipal code?
You know, I think that there are restrictions for vape stores in our zoning ordinance. If you would give me just a moment, I'll look that up. That's still, there's still relatively new regulations, and I...
Anybody want to start the chapter?
Don't have them on instant recall.
Jeopardy question.
Yeah, Jeopardy question. It's only 700 foot from Reeves Rogers, and I don't know why I didn't think about that before this gentleman brought it up, but...
This is more than 700 feet from Reeves Rogers.
Property line to property line.
That was in 2005, right?
One too long ago.
It seems so much further than that.
Yeah, I agree.
I just measured.
Looks like the maximum minimum that our ordinance places is 500 feet. Is that right? Table 411?
It's 300 feet puncture.
That's for a liquor store, at least. That's a prohibited use in here, anyway.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, liquor store wouldn't be able to go, but I...
So what are you thinking?
Vape products.
I thought that was also prohibited.
That's what I'm trying to find. No vape stores prohibited, but...
They made products.
Right, products.
Ooh, I don't think, that's hard. I mean, I could sell a vape from you at my law office, right? Some vape in the corner.
So we do have, we do have separation requirements for establishments that, that meet the definition of retail shop, tobacco, vape, and dispensary. But that's defined as a store that devotes at least 51% of its floor area, or earns at least 51% of gross sales, that displays sale, distribution, delivery, offering, furnishing, or marketing of products intended for recreational, non-prescription use, including but not limited to cigarettes, smokeless tobacco, pipe tobacco, vapes, products made from cannabinoid derivative plants, or other nicotine or cannabinoid delivery devices, components, products, liquid nicotine or cannabinoids, or liquid nicotine or cannabinoid containers. So I think if there was a use that had, like...
Fifty-one.
Yeah, that was like a smaller, that...
Yeah, 51%.
That, that, our separation requirements would not, would not apply.
Had to ask.
And a learning opportunity for me.
I didn't realize it was that close, so just when he brought that up, I measured it.
Well, I definitely think trying to, the parallel spaces in there, maybe getting a few more spaces, if we can get that done. So, in general, I think it's a, a nice improvement.
If the, if the commission did wish to recommend approval, we'd certainly be happy, either approval or deferral, we'd be happy to work with the applicant on their design, to see if, if they could get a couple of parallel parking spaces there.
We'd be more than happy to add those parallel spaces in there, for sure.
You feel like you can get those?
I do, but we'll work with staff and to make sure we can, they fit first before we promise anything, but yeah, we'll definitely get that and get a revised concept, Matthew, as soon as possible.
And then to Mr. Wright's comment about the restrictions on the sign piece?
Yes, we'll get that added as well.
Okay.
And, and just so I understand correctly, are we talking about the parallel spaces are going to be over on the
West side.
The west side. So, people will be having to cross the traffic.
Well, they would, they would probably come through the parking lot and then
Yeah, turn around and pull them over there, but still to come into the building.
Right, cross traffic.
Do that all the time, I guess, in any mall-type parking lot, you're crossing traffic all the time, and this is a limited amount of traffic. Okay. What other comments, questions, and concerns?
So, do we want to move it through this body and see those changes at council, or do we want them to come back to this?
Do you want to see those at council?
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve subject to all staff comments, making those two changes with the signage restrictions and the three parallel spots.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Ms. Jacob. Ms. Ava Water?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Motion passes. Six, one. All right, our next item is a sign ordinance amendment to amend Article One, Section 25.2-2, the definitions and interpretation, and Article Two, Section 25.2-26, onsite permanent sign requirements regarding second-floor signs. The City of Murfsboro Building and Codes Department is the applicant. Ms. Stevens, good evening.
Good evening.
And, Ms. Stevens, if you need me to go to any of the, any of the pictures on my computer, I'd be happy to pull them up for you.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. As you know, I'm Teresa Stevens, the City Sign Administrator. Thank you for the opportunity to present today. I'm here to propose an amendment to a current sign ordinance specifically regarding the use of signs on second-floor elevations in specific overlays and zones. Allowing second-floor signs can offer businesses a chance to enhance visibility without contributing to visual, visual clutter when thoughtfully planned signs are allowed. To clarify the specific use and sign type, we are proposing adding a second-floor sign definition to the sign ordinance. Second-floor sign is a type of sign attached that is mounted on the second floor of a multi-tenant commercial building. Second-floor signs do not include projecting signs. A tenant space must have a minimum of 20 linear feet of frontage on the second floor of a building, excluding the basement, to be eligible for a second-floor sign. Any measurement of building frontage shall apply only to the second-floor frontage owned or leased and occupied by the tenant, but shall not include a common area. A second-floor sign must be attached to the area occupied by the second-floor tenant, and must be set back at least 12 inches from the outer limits of the tenant's space. No part of the second-floor sign shall cover, obstruct, interfere, or extend above or below any window, window ledge, window frame, cornice, accent band, or other architectural feature. A second-floor sign must use individual solid cast letters, channel letters, or reverse channel letters attached directly to the building or raceway of the same color as the building. Raceways must be kept in good repair, including without limit, limitation repairing holes from previous signs. The amendment will include the following, the, this ordinance amendment will only affect the following zones, GDO I, GDO II, GDO III, GDO IV, and PUD. Signs on the building front of a second-floor multi-tenant building will be allowed under this proposal. One sign per second-floor tenant that has at least 20 linear feet of exterior tenant wall along the building front. Maximum sign height is 30 inches, one and a half square feet per linear foot of tenant front, frontage with a maximum of 100 square feet sign. The sign cannot exceed 75% of the tenant front. Limited to the second story of a commercial multi-tenant building, an illumination shall be pushed through style lighting, exposed tube, or exposed LED light sources will be prohibited. This amendment will strike a balance between the need for business visibility and the importance of preserving the aesthetic integrity of our community. Thank you for your time and consideration, I'm happy to any, answer any questions. The Planning Commission will need to conduct a public hearing on this matter, then formulate a recommendation for City Council. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. Questions, do y'all have? Oh, there's what I like, pictures.
I did bring pictures today.
Thank you.
So, this is an example, just to go in a little bit more, this is an example of what it may look like. This is a neighboring community that, that allows these types of signs, and the picture on the left, the sprint picture, has a raceway behind it. We, on this, for us, the raceway would have to match the building, this one is, I chose this one because it stands out a little bit, so you'll know why we want it to match, so it'll just blend in. The picture on the right is individually-mounted channel letters, and this is where we would talk about letter height only being 30 inches, max, or the sign height can be 30 inches, so it'd be from the top of the yellow logo to the bottom of the yellow logo, would be a maximum of 30 inches. The next set are reverse channel letters, most people will call this a halo illumination. We don't have any restrictions on color, I did want to make sure that was clear, that colored halo is, is allowed. If that's something that you all wanted to add, we'd be happy to not include that. Solid cast letters are, can be a high-density urethane, or an aluminum, something that's just a, other than styrofoam or plastic, and I put some examples there. And then I just gave a few examples of what's not allowed. Sign background, projecting signs, the atomic rooster, there's a projecting sign, a cabinet sign, the frosty spoon, and then Paul's, there gives you an example of exposed neons or LED signs.
Do you have a sample of a building where we might have a multi-story building? I don't know how to explain, you know, it's just, this one has walkways, there's, there's that separation
Yeah.
Between the wall, and, you know, it's a very definite
So, you want me to use examples in Murphysboro that you can relate to?
Yes.
So
Because I have one in Mon.
On Medical Center Parkway, there's one that does have second-story signs that was written part of the, part of their requirement, allowable uses there, and they have exterior and interior entrance, that you go up through the stairwell to the top floor, and access the buildings that way. There's a couple more, in, mostly in, in the gateway area, most of them are going to be around Medical Center Parkway. We've got some projects coming up also, that will be able to take advantage of this on their second story. There's not a whole, a whole lot of buildings in Murphysboro that this applies to.
Ms. Stevens, if you can give me a location, I'll pull it up on, on Google Street View.
Gateway and Medical Center, it's the
Is it the Gateway Urgent Care?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there anything about those that you would want to, you've taken into account any negatives that you had with any of this, to take care of getting that written into this?
Yeah, so we drove around, we went to some neighboring communities, drove around a little bit to see what we had. We clearly didn't want to bring, like, a flat metal sign, we didn't, we don't want to allow that. Cabinet signs can become intrusive with lighting, especially with LED lighting now, a cabinet sign that has a translucent background can really, can really bright, be very bright. So, we wanted to stay with that, and more simple streamlined signs, because it can get a little cluttered when you add second-floor signs, but if it's done correctly, we believe that we've really worked hard to make sure that we keep the sign size appropriate, but large enough for people to see. We don't want to put a little sign up there that people can't see, but we don't want it so large that it takes up half the building.
But so, for example, on this one that we're looking at on our screen, you could potentially have six signs right there on the face of that building?
Yes, and I will say that those signs are larger than what we're, the red realty sign is five feet by five feet, if that gives you an idea, like a perspective of it. The orthodontic sign, I believe, is about four and a half feet tall for both lines, so that's quite a bit more than, than what we're going to allow here.
And all signs have to go through you to get approved, correct?
Yes, correct.
All right, well, any other questions before we open the public hearing? Comments? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Stevens. We'll open the public hearing and see if anybody would like to come forward to speak on this item. All right, we will close the public hearing. Any other comments or questions?
If there are none, I make a motion, we approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and second, Ms. Jacob. Ms. Ava Water?
I'm staying.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Stevens. All right, next, we are moving on to staff reports and other business. We have one item, and it is the courtyards at Franklin Road, an amended preliminary plat for 48 lots on 23.49 acres, Zone CF and RS8, located along Franklin Road. Epcun Communities is the applicant. Mr. Barbie, welcome back.
Good evening, Chair Jones and Planning Commission members. This next, next item for your consideration tonight is a master plan and preliminary plat, as Ms. Jones described, for 48 lots total, that's 47 residential lots, and one commercial lot on 23.49 acres. You've previously seen this master plan and preliminary plat and approved it, however, since that time, the property owner of this parcel and the adjacent owner to the east have not been able to come to terms with some of the, the real estate transactions they were hoping to be able to, so the proposed developer has come back and made a design change, shifting the entrance to the west side of this property. The new entrance will line up along
I've got it pulled up on my computer.
If you could share that, Matthew, that'd be a huge help, I'm not finding it. So, it will line up on the west side of the property now, instead of the east side. On the east side of the property, we are still requesting right-of-way to line up with the Rucker Lane extension that is to the south. Other than that, the majority of this preliminary plat is identical to what you've previously seen and approved. Staff would recommend approval, subject to the remaining staff comments that you have in your staff report, and I have, I'm available if you have any questions.
And this was, as, as Mr. Barbie mentioned, the majority of this is the same, with the exception of the shifting of the, of the main entrance street from the east side to the west side, and I think our, our thought was, is that that was just too big a change to review that administratively with the construction plan process, so we brought the amendment, amendment back to Planning Commission.
Obviously, it's far enough away from the Rucker Lane, whatever that distance is, it's fine with transportation.
With, the developer has, and the planning staff have worked closely with the public infrastructure team to, to, on the location of this, and Mr. Matt Hamilton with Reagan Smith with the design team is here, if you have any questions for him.
Any questions?
If there are none, I move for approval, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and second, Ms. Jacob. Ms. Ava Water?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Okay. Do we have any other staff reports, or any other business tonight?
No, ma'am.
Okay, if not, then we stand adjourned.